Good afternoon, members. You're all very welcome to this special meeting. I'm going to ask John now to take the roll call. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, members. To all members of Derry City and Strabane District Council, you're hereby summoned to a special meeting of the council, which will be held as a hybrid meeting today in the council chamber in Guelph, Monday, the 4th of March at two o'clock. Alderman Cook?
Online, John.
Alderman Guy?
Online, John.
Alderman Hossi? Alderman Carrigan?
Online, John.
Alderman McMorris?
Online, John.
Alderman Middleton?
Apologies for Julie, she's working.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Montgomery? Alderman Wilkinson? Councillor Jason Barr? Councillor Lillian Barr?
Online, John.
Councillor Raymond Barr? Councillor Paul Boggs? Councillor Boyle?
Here.
Councillor Clark?
On show.
Councillor Cusick?
Online, John.
Councillor Deeney? Councillor Devine?
On show.
Councillor Donnelly?
On show, online.
Councillor Alex Duffy?
On show, online.
Councillor Sandra Duffy?
On show and online.
Councillor Farrell?
Here.
Councillor Fleming? Councillor Gallagher? Councillor Harkin? Councillor Hart?
On show, online, John.
Councillor Heaney? Councillor Hutton?
Apologies.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson?
On show.
Councillor Leonard? Councillor Luke?
On show.
Councillor McDade? Councillor McGinnley?
On show, online, John.
Councillor McHugh? Councillor Minnie?
Here.
Councillor Murphy?
On show.
Councillor Norris? Councillor O'Farrell?
On show, early now, John.
Councillor Riley? Councillor Tierney? And Councillor Neelis?
Hi, Elena.
Thank you, members. Okay, thank you.
Just going to read the broadcast statement. I would like to remind everyone present at this meeting in the Guelph Hall that this meeting will be broadcast live to the internet and will be capable of repeated viewing. This broadcast may be terminated or suspended in accordance with our protocol. Due to your attendance at this meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and to the use and storage of those images for broadcasting or training purposes and for the purpose of keeping historical records and making those records available to the public. Members and approved speakers are reminded to only have their mics and cameras on while speaking at the meeting and to use the chat facility to hand out a request to speak. A copy of the council's privacy notice may be found on the council's website, www.dareystroban.com. Just before we continue on, you may have seen, you may have seen that a letter has come in from DFC regarding the hybrid meetings and they're recommended that they stop on the 6th of March. So I'm just going to ask John if he would read out the paragraph that refers to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Members, if we haven't already sent this out to you, we will do. And the next day or two, I'm not going to go through the whole letter, but it was sent out by DFC. And since this is the only opportunity to let you know through a full council meeting before the 6th of March, I'm just going to read out the paragraph toward the end, which is, as you know, the current arrangements have been in place through a number of extension orders, which were put in place over the last couple of years. The most recent extension order will cease to have effect after the 6th of March. This will mean that provisions which enable councils to hold remote and/or hybrid meetings will fall and legislation will revert back to the position before the regulations that were put in place for the coronavirus period. So the instruction from DFC is that councils should make arrangements to ensure they are positioned to hold meetings in person after 6th of March. Now, I'm advised we have a meeting on the 6th of March, so that can continue as hybrid, but it's from the 7th. In other words, they will be back to in-person meetings in full. So that's the instruction we've received on Friday, members. Obviously, there's some outworkings to that that we'll have to work through, but the default position is that we're back to in-person meetings from the 7th. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No comments, members? No? That's okay. Yeah. Go ahead, Philip.
It's just to advise that we will bring that up under Chair's business again tomorrow at the Governance Strategic Planning Committee meeting and provide members with some further information following discussions that have been taking place over the last 24 hours or so.
Alright, John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll keep it brief as well. No, just to thank the city solicitor for forwarding that to us. And you can be assured that all members of the SDLP will be present here in this chamber, if they, of course, can be. And I think it's a mark, actually, of if we look in front of us today, there's a lot of people online and I think it's always better if everybody can be in the same room together. I'm sure you would agree with me, Mayor. So, look, we note the comments from the department and we look forward to everybody being in the room again. Again, it's part of the normalization process, so I suppose we have to look at that as good news. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Carrigan, do you want to come in?
Just very briefly, Mayor, I gave you this was in place, but I do think as Councillor Boyle has touched on it there, the importance of still having the option. I mean, we can see by the roll call today, I mean, you know you're in the chamber and many members out of the four there are present and physically in the chamber. So it's still, I wouldn't want it left in such a way that it was, that we would have to continue. I know this legislation has to be sorted out in this regard, but, you know, it could hinder ones and their aspect of acting as an elected representative, particularly attending certain meetings, because, I mean, there can be occasions, a meeting, you don't know how long a meeting is going to last during the government, but you could be there for 20 minutes and you could have got to two hours travelling, you know. So it's just that has to be in mind, you know, when people have other commitments as well. But no, just it would be still good that, yes, it's always good to have in-person meetings and we have had certain working groups and different meetings haven't been able to be held with an online option. We have had that in recent months there, but still, I still don't think we should get away the hybrid totally, Mayor. But again, that's outside of our remit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christopher?
Thanks, Mayor. And just briefly, and we can be discussed again tomorrow, but I would, I would completely disagree the fact that this is, this is good news. This is a retrograde step. There's no doubt about that. There's the remote meetings, virtual meetings or hybrid meetings. There should be a place for them. There's a place for them within assembly. Why should local government be treated differently? And I think that this is certainly a retrograde step taken by the minister. And I'm glad to hear that the minister's own party don't agree with them on it. There's, and I look forward, I know this is going to be discussed at Nogga next week, and I look forward to that and I think we should be challenging it. And this will have a disproportionate impact on anybody who care in responsibilities, anybody from a rural background that has longer distances to travel and anybody living with a disability. So I think we should be trying to create more options for people to be involved in local government. And this is, in my opinion, a retrograde step and it needs to be challenged. So, but I appreciate the, the communication being shared by our city solicitor. So, but I certainly wouldn't describe this as a positive step forward, if anything, but thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Harkin?
And, yeah, I'm actually surprised to hear this, so I appreciate that we've been given notice of it today. And I agree with Councillor Jackson and others that this isn't a positive step. I mean, look, I, I try to be at the physical meetings as often as I can. I'm not there today, but I was planning to actually come over in a little bit to the, to the physical meeting. But I do think this would be a backward step. I think that we've, we've had discussions saying that, like, hybrid is here and that we have to give people that option for, for multiple different reasons. And I don't think that we can allow this just to be simply imposed on us. So I'm glad to hear that it'll be discussed tomorrow at the Governance and Strategic Planning Meeting. I'm not on that committee, but if there's a proposal there to reject this, I would certainly be supporting that. And I think that we should, as a council, if there's no legal impediment to it, establish that we are going to continue with the hybrid model. And while we encourage people to come to the chamber, because it's better for a lot of different reasons, but I think when people can't for different reasons, they should be given the option of being able to participate as many people are participating today through online. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, I don't know what year it is, but I could maybe go ahead anyway, whatever you ever carry here.
It's Councillor Donnelly. Thank you. Look, my attitude, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I, I think the hybrid, like the previous number of speakers, the hybrid, hybrid model has been working and it's been very effective. Again, as, as has been outlined there, this is something that, that is probably going to be imposed on us and I think it should be resisted and I think people should have the option of, of, of being, no, obviously it is good to be in the chamber, but as been outlined, sometimes that's just not possible. So I would like to see this resisted by, by elected members. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Donnelly. Come on, Councillor Boyle.
Just the same, Mayor, as well, as I said, we stand ready. If we are required to be in this chamber, we will be in this chamber. However, as outlined by quite a significant number of other speakers as well, the hybrid model, it does work. Sometimes it does work, absolutely. I think it probably works best even just today. And we would be supportive of any proposal to, to write to the minister to suggest that the current work and practices continue. I do know this is going to be discussed tomorrow anyway in governance and strategic planning. So not to draw it out too much further, Mayor, but just to say I, I think that we can have this conversation again, but I think probably tomorrow there will be a proposal that we write in that fashion. And should that happen, we may well even propose it ourselves. Then we'll do it at the appropriate committee and the appropriate committee is the Governance Strategic Planning Committee. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Farrell, did you want to come in?
Thanks, Mayor. Just very, very briefly. Do we have any flexibility as it stands presently? Or can we legally hold hybrid meetings after the 6th of March?
I'm going to let John come in again here now.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members, for all of your comments. I suppose what, what I would say, members, is that today was simply to bring the letter to your attention. As Philip has said, online, there has been lots of discussion this morning with regard to that. So if you would just afford us the opportunity until tomorrow, we will outline to you the discussion that's taken place, the options, and maybe answer your question more fully tomorrow, if that's okay, members.
Okay, thank you, John. Any declarations of members' interest? No, nothing online. Right, item number five now, and that is the City Deal Central Riverfront Strand Road and Wall City Ebrington Regeneration and Tourism Project Updates and Presentation.
Sorry, Mayor, maybe I have missed it, but I don't see the slides in the, in the pack. So it's very difficult to see them. Can we perhaps pull the blinds behind us so as we can see them?
All right, okay, I'll get arrangements made for the blinds to be pulled.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, they're been pulled. I'll maybe speak briefly to the paper before we move on to the presentation, members. If that's okay. That'll be enough, Mayor.
Yes, John.
So, members, you have the paper before you. It was issued with the agenda for the meeting. Just very briefly, just skip through some of the highlights of that. Obviously, the purpose of today's meeting is specifically in relation to the Centre River on Strand Road and the Wall City Ebrington part of City Deal. Members know well by now that the heads of terms were signed back in February 2021. At that stage, we were looking at a £250 million investment. We spent quite a bit of time over the last number of months talking about the challenges of staying within budget, which we now have. But very positive news in terms of that is we are in discussion with the majority of project partners about increasing the budget. And at this stage, although we can't put a definite figure on it, we've certainly increased the budget and we are currently somewhere in the region of £280 to £300 million of investment. As the OBCs finalize, that number will also crystallize. So a lot of those budgetary challenges have now been overcome. As members know, a number of project OBCs have outlined business cases, that is, have already been completed and submitted into government. And there are a number remaining, one of which we're dealing with today. So just very brief recap. The over £100 million Strabane Town Centre regeneration scheme, which comprises the new North West Regional College campus, the primary healthcare hub, the leisure centre, the new footbridge, and the associated public realm works was submitted in December following a special council meeting. We then had another special council meeting in January. And at that special council meeting, the almost £40 million investment in the two innovation projects being led by Ulster University were presented and they've been submitted. Also at that special council meeting, the almost £15 million suite of projects that form the smart and digital element of the scheme were presented and submitted. And as members know, and Eddin is here with us today to update on DNA, DNA slightly ahead of the game or considerably ahead of the game, and the almost £13 million investment in it has recently been approved for funding and we'll just update on that project as part of this suite of projects later on. So the remaining OBCs to be submitted comprise what we're presenting today. And another special council meeting has been organized for the end of March into which we will invite Ulster University and the Western Health and Social Care Trust to update on the School of Medicine and the Personalized Medicine Innovation Project, both of which we hope will, will be in a position to be submitted by the end of March, beginning of April. So that will complete the totality of the OBCs for City Deal. So focusing very specifically then on the Centre Riverfront Strand Road and Wall City Ebrington. Members, section three sets out the progress and key issues. Just to take a wee moment, because the important thing, I think, as we move into the presentation, where you'll see the detail. The number of benefits that arise from this project are very significant. And the primary objective is to create a vibrant and thriving Centre Riverfront and Wall City area and including the corresponding area of the Strand Road. Another major objective is to ensure that with the university projects and indeed potential future university expansion, that that becomes part of the regeneration of the city. That the university expands towards the riverfront and the city centre and becomes an integral part of the regeneration of the city centre. The creation of brand-new public spaces through principally a reallocation of road space, a reorientation of road space and a redesign of traffic is a key objective. And very, very importantly, in terms of climate change and the move towards net zero and indeed as the city expands, is, is to design the new infrastructural changes so that public transport can become completely prioritized and public transport walking and cycling to ensure that in the future, as bus provision increases, that the road network has been designed in such a way that that can facilitate that increase in public transport provision. All of this is equally about the citizen and the visitor, making sure that the citizens of the city and district and the visitors to the city and district continue to enjoy this place in the decades ahead, driving footfall into the city centre, supporting our businesses that are here at the moment and supporting the growth of businesses right across the various sectors from retail to hospitality to office-based economy and very importantly, the nighttime economy, ensuring that recent successes and trying to drive forward footfall and business in the city centre continues round the clock and that we have a thriving nighttime economy as well as what we see during the day. And of huge significance, members, there are many, many potential development sites across the city centre that are in private sector hands or owned by the public sector. And this scheme seeks to ensure that those parcels of land become much more attractive propositions for investment. The key objective of City Deal is the investment of public sector money to ensure that the private sector is catalyzed and that the private sector invests many multiples of what is taken forward in terms of public sector. So multiple objectives, multiple outcomes of the scheme. Joanne and my colleagues are going to speak to it now in some detail. I'm not going to go through. You'll be glad to hear the various key points in the paper, because they will come out in the presentation. Except to say this, members, what we're presenting today is a workable vision for the riverfront and Wall City. It is one that has been worked on now for quite some time with colleagues in DFI, DFC and Tourism NI across the various sections of council liaising with as many of the statutory agencies as we can. It is achievable. It is doable. It is affordable within the budget. It will have the biggest transformational impact that we've seen in many decades along the riverfront and Wall City. But ultimately, members, and this is the key issue in this project, ultimately, this is a vision, a workable vision at this stage. Once we get past financial deal, it will be a vision that will have to be consulted upon extensively. We will be working with local businesses right across the city centre, the Strand Road, Queen's Key, and more importantly, with the general wider public to ensure that everyone is bought into the scheme. There is ample opportunity to flex the detail of the scheme and to ensure that what results will be a project that the vast majority, if not everybody, can subscribe to. So it's a key point today, members, that in any scheme of this nature, it is really important to say that it will be developed and co-designed in partnership with local business and users. So, members, once we pass through today, we'll be seeking endorsement from you of the vision to ensure that the OBC can be submitted into the system. Like the other projects, section four of this report deals with the next stages and the very significant requirement to scale up in terms of resourcing. We will be moving to delivery once financial deal is signed. And as you know, members, we're targeting financial deal toward the end of the spring, early summer, and working with colleagues in government to try to make that a reality. The $64 million question is when will projects be on the ground? And we hope to be in a position, once financial deal is signed, to be able to map out exactly which projects will, will be on the ground first and the pipeline of projects that will take place. But what we can say with certainty today, members, and Eddin will take this up at the end of the meeting, is that the DNA project, which is now fully funded, will be on site toward the end of this calendar year and will be the first City Deal project in Northern Ireland to begin construction. And we're exceptionally pleased by that and show it was real commitment and progress and taking forward what is a very complex suite of projects. So, members, I'm going to pass initially to Eamon to open up the presentation. I'm going to take it from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, members. And if we can have the presentation up, please. Thank you, John. Members, John has already covered the majority of John's slide. As, as you can quite clearly see, the signing of the heads of terms happened in February 21. And since then, the pot of money has grown in terms of the investment projects. As you can see, there are outlines, Strabane Town Centre projects and what's on the riverfront. And as I say, John has outlined them and their value, so I'm not going to repeat that. If we can go on to the next slide, please, Joanne. Next slide. Oh, sorry. Apologies, members, for having a bit of difficulty with the technology here. So again, John's outlined the purpose of this investment for the Centre Riverfront and the Wall City. And today is primarily about Centre Riverfront, Wall City and, and Ebrington. But the innovation projects play a key role in this and two of them are cited along here. One, of course, will be the, the School of Medicine, which will be on the site adjacent to the existing council building. And the Cadwic site will be directly opposite the council building. And as we move through the presentation, you'll see how important these are and how they create, if you like, a bookend for one end of, of the, the investment. um for one end of of the the investment. So, as I mentioned earlier, um, the investment uh originally started out uh at heads of terms of two hundred and fifty million pounds. Already through public sector, um additional public sector investment, that has grown to the region of two hundred and eighty million pounds. And uh that has come about basically through the challenges that were presented to us by the growth um in inflation, the downturn in the economy. Um, and um partners are our central government partners, the uh the trust, uh the the college, the university and indeed council have had a look at how we can deliver this and ensure that um we have secured the projects, secured the outcomes and the benefits, and secured the partners and the partnership. And so that additional money is coming through. Um, our partners deliver uh this uh new proposal that you will see here today. Um, we believe that it's high level, it's concept, but it's also real. And we hope that that um at the end of today's presentation, that all members will have a sense of what this could be. Um, and as the uh as John has said, um it is open uh as we move through this process and we move through the public consultation phase to see what can be improved, what can be changed. Um, but we, what we're presenting here today, we we hope will give members a feel of what the city could look like with this very substantial investment. So on that, Madam Mayor, through you, I'm going to pass to Alfie. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Eamon. If we could just, right. Um, so, members, just before um going on to the specifics of the Central Riverfront, Wall City and Everton project, the next couple of slides are just really, I suppose, a reflection, the wider city deal, what we aim to achieve and um the progress which John has already touched on. So you see from the slides down the left-hand side, the key objectives were all about creating jobs. And at the time, the heads of terms were signed. Um, the economic model predicted that would be seven thousand new jobs, two hundred and thirty million per annum in G V A and an additional hundred and twenty-six million per annum in wages by twenty thirty-two. Um, obviously, a key objective is leverage in private sector investment, but also um where possible, engaging with their partners to bring more central government investment to the table. And as has already been touched on, we've been successful in that. And the two hundred and fifty million which we set out off, we now expect to grow to um three hundred million and those benefits will um increase accordingly. Um, the other objectives, key objectives, growing sustainability and inclusivity and increasing skills and employability. Shall we just pass on to the next one, please, Joanne? So, members, John has already touched on this. Um, to achieve our next step in this journey is achieving financial deal. And to do that, we need to have ten O B Cs submitted and either approved or government is content with the direction of travel in respect of those O B Cs. So you'll see the slide sets out where we're at in relation to each of them. So the Cadrick and Smart Digital projects, both those have been approved or submitted and in the system. Um, the School of Medicine, Personalised Medicine Centre, obviously, the medical school has been opened and under accommodation. And um as John has touched upon, there'll be a further council meeting at the end of this month to um approve submission of that O B C. Um, in relation to Strabane regeneration, which involved four O B Cs, all those have been completed and submitted into the system. Um, the Central Riverfront Strand Road Placemaking and Act Active Travel in Wall City are obviously the subject of today's meeting. And the DNA Museum in Everton, the O B C has obviously been approved um at this point. And we've just touched that hopefully that project will be on site by the end of this calendar year. So, members, from now on, we'll focus on the Central Riverfront, Wall City and Everton project, and I'll pass back to Joanne. Thank you.
Um, I'm going to start by showing you the photograph of the existing um city landscape. Um, so primarily, as we come down the front of the riverfront, there's a a dual carriageway running along there. The significant um size of roundabouts um at the City Hotel and down at the existing council offices. Um, so we want to change that. We want to reduce the traffic priority and make it more pedestrian priority. We want to increase the number of green spaces um and also the multipurpose spaces and multi-use spaces available and very much change the the look and the feel as we come across the Peace Bridge um landing landing there in the front of the front of the Guildhall. Um, to increase the pedestrian areas there, make more of an impact and increase the visualisation as you cross the Peace Bridge, connecting the Guildhall Square through Shipkey Gate, up Shipkey Street as well to to the Diamond. So the context and background of the project, as we've already touched on, forty-five million pounds allocated to the Centre Riverfront and Strand Road proposals um and twenty million pounds allocated to the Wall City and Everton, which is the contribution um through City Deal towards the the DNA Museum. So we've undertaken extensive traffic modelling to date. Um, and that's really to prove that the the change in the road network which we are proposing actually works. So this has been undertaken over the last sixty-eight months, where we've been working closely with our appointed consultants and also D F I and Translink um to prove that what we're, that that the road network reallocation um works for the city. Um, and and changing the the road network, as I'll show you now in the upcoming slides, we're identifying significant new civic spaces and places. Um, everything that we have proposed in here aligns to the North West Transport Plan, which D F I are currently working on. Um, and also the L D P, the Local Development Plan, which our colleagues in planning are progressing at the moment. Um, so it's been very positive as far as working with the key partners, D F I, D F C, Translink, um and making sure that at all governance levels, um they are content with the proposals. Um, we've developed a phase one for the Wall City Programme, which I'll take you through. Um, and we've also developed a draft lighting uh strategy and action plan over the last number of months. An element of the work from this will be funded through City Deal, and again, I'll give you an overview of that. Um, as we've already touched on, DNA outline business case has been approved and the work is due to commence on site later this year. Um, one of the key elements of the design um is ensuring that we are meeting our climate pledge and ensuring that any climate change implications are included within the design, that we've got a smart design um looking at the flood risk uh reduction and stormwater reta- uh attenuation, increasing the permeable areas and dealing with the surface flooding as and where we can. The wider vision uh and the development plan for the city, um this map shows you um what we are proposing, not just for City Deal, but also for future phases um following City Deal. The area in green there is this, the area that is covered through City Deal, the realignment of the Centre Riverfront and Foil Embankment um to create the active travel corridor and civic spaces, which you mentioned. Um, we're working up through the Wall City. So this has shown extensive redevelopment to the riverfront, including also the university projects, Cadrick and the School of Medicine. Um, the areas in pink there are showing potential redevelopment opportunities um as the projects develop along the Central Riverfront. Um, Foilside Shopping Centre, Richmond Centre, uh and also the future developments at the Courthouse, the the old visitory site um and William Street Car Park and the potential redevelopment of the P S N I site um on Strand Road. So that this is the highlight to the the green again is the initial phase of the works which we are funding as part of City Deal. And then adding in in blue here, the future phases, um which um include the potential relocation of the bus station to the existing visitory site and also the potential for a new transport bridge connecting the proposed relocation of the bus station across to the North West Transport Hub. Other future phases will include the the movement of the council offices down to the site of the current Peace Gardens, which we'll show you in the future slides here, and also future phases of the um Wall City Public Realm. The key Study Day projects have been broken down into five areas. Um, the first area here is the University Square, second Strand Road and Queen's Key, the third Harbour Square, the fourth the Wall City and the fifth DNA Museum at Everton. To underpin all of this, um as I've mentioned there, we've had to do extensive traffic modelling, working alongside our colleagues in D F I. Um, the the basis of this is to create the the new civic spaces that we're opening up. So the proposal is to remove the roundabouts at the City Hotel and also down at the existing council offices. Um, the area which we are now calling University Square. So in order to be able to remove these roundabouts, we've introduced a one-way jury radio route um along the Strand Road, returning along Queen's Key. So it's not the change in the number of lanes of traffic. They will remain two lanes both ways, two lanes one way up Strand Road, two lanes coming down Queen's Key. The the four lanes at the front of the Centre Riverfront will be moved closer together to enable us to um provide a new landing point at the Peace Bridge, which provides a direct pedestrian crossing as opposed to having to cross on a staggered pedestrian junction um as we do at the minute. So it's more of a focal point uh as you cross um the Peace Bridge into Guildhall Square and very much making the whole area pedestrian priority and and less of a traffic priority. So we're not changing the volume of traffic or the 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 road network here because it still remains two lanes both ways. But in removing the roundabouts, we're obviously able to provide these substantial additional areas um of civic space. Um, we're also opening a number of new roads in this proposal. One road will be open between the existing um Foyle Street Car Park and the existing bus station. Um, because we are proposing to pedestrianise Whittaker Street. The the new traffic route from Foyle Street will be through the new road between the the Foyle Street Car Park and the existing bus station. This will also be the route that the buses will take when they're exiting um Foyle Street and the bus station. The benefit of this is that the buses and the traffic no longer have to turn left, go up around the roundabout and then go back down in order to cross the Craig Evans Bridge. Um, Translink were content with this proposal because it um speeds up the bus routes um to the Waterside and the Belfast buses because um there's no longer the need to 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 do that uh or go around the roundabout and orientate back. Um, we're also opening a new road between um at the existing Strand Road Car Parks, that's just opposite the P S N I station. Um, and this opens up the the visual aspect between Strand Road as well and the riverfront. Um, this road is proposed at the minute for buses and taxis and and pedestrians, but as the design develops, that that may change. Um, another key aspect of this is introduction of bus priority. So at certain times of the day, um one of the two lanes will become a bus lane at peak times um to assist with the movement of public transport, uh making it more attractive um to the user because the it's increasing the the real reliability of the journey times. Um, and we're working closely with Translink. Um, oh, and we will be working closely with Translink, and we have been over the next number of years in looking at their bus routes, um the number of buses that are going along the Strand Road and Queen's Key, increasing those um and working with them as we progress with the the introduction of the the bus corridors. So the first area um we'll talk through is uh University Square. So we're all aware of what the existing um situation is at University Square, largely traffic priority, lots of blacktop, a significant sized roundabout, um lots of blacktop car parking. Um, we want to change that. We want to connect the city better to the river at this location. The river is one of our key aspects. Um, we want to bring the university towards the river, make this area very much open and end the university campus, um connecting the university to the city through the proposals and also providing more green greenery trees um and a nicer place to to dwell. Some images here from other cities um of the proposals, high level or high quality finishes, um additional trees, seating areas, um and again, a strong connectivity to the river. The proposed landscape design um as shown here, it shows either, again, the extensive area of multipurpose civic space that we can introduce. Um, especially there at the front of the proposed Medical Centre or School of Medicine. So you'll see in pink the two um university buildings which are proposed also through City Deal, the School of Medicine and the Cadrick Building opposite the council offices. Um, we're also very much connecting the Foil Arts Centre down to the river. We've been working closely with the university over the last number of months as they develop their landscape proposals for the Foil Arts Centre, ensuring that we have that connectivity between our proposals and the university proposals. The idea being that as you walk towards this area, you'll very much be aware that you've entered a new area of the city, a university campus. The university hope to take down a number of the walls along Strand Road um and open the campus so it's really a place for the people of the city to walk through and feel that they're very much part of it. Um, and we're also creating uh multifunctional places for events, um pop-up cafes um and introducing much more to greenery um and feature lighting as well as another key part of that. There's also the potential there in the future for the the existing council buildings to be connected to the Cadrick Building with a bridge feature um should the university take up on the council building in the future. Uh, a cross-section through the proposed development to highlight the increased area of public realm. Um, the uh on the bottom section there, that's the proposed, which shows a significant increase in public realm and green space as opposed to the top section, which is very much roadway and car parks. As I've already mentioned, climate and nature-based solutions is a key part of the design um which will be considered as the design moves forward, introducing additional permeable features. So again, this is the existing view that we're all very familiar with. Um, lots of blacktop, traffic priority. Um, we want to change that. We want to change the look and the feel. And the proposal is shown now. And so it's a significant um impact and difference, significant field to the current situation. The the scale of the building there is shown as the School of Medicine is very much a high-level concept at this stage, just to show you the location of that building and the potential um connectivity into the university. Another key aspect is of this is the development of the lighting strategy and the feat provision of feature lighting at all the key areas um within the City Deal proposals. Um, so there'll be an introduction of feature lighting potentially, um connecting the river up to the Foil Arts Centre and into the university. And we also have the potential here for having a sculpture lighting feature um which is part of the wayfinding proposals, a destination place um for tourism as well, connecting the different areas of the city through wayfinding. And that's the the end of the area one, uh University Square. John, if you want to.
Thank you, Joanne. And just through you, Mayor, um it's it's uh obviously a very substantial presentation. So we thought we would pause at the end of each section just in case there were any worries from members as we go through each section. So that's that particular section completed. If there are any comments, Mayor.
Mr Verk, go ahead.
Um, good morning, Mayor, and um and thanks to Joanne for the presentation. And it's it's a it is, not only is it an exciting um presentation, it's also a necessity. I think the the original sl- slide set it out. When we when we look at the current um ar- arrangement of a of a riverfront, it's not, it's it's not, it's not comparable to any other major European city. And that's what we are. Um, so we need to change. It's it's a requirement, it's a necessity that that we make improvements. Um, they they are riverfront. Um, we improve the appearance, but also um we we make it work better um and and protect ourselves against the the inevitable impacts of climate change. So, I I want to congratulate the entire team for for everything that you have done in in relation to this aspect because when when we talk about the economic future of the North West, um, the university is key. And I and in relation to this proposal, um it's going to be a a clear demonstration that this is a Euro, this is a a university city. Um, where rather than the university being seen up behind a wall on the Strand Road, up behind a wall on the Strand Road, the, the university is going to be slapped bang in the heart of our city centre and that's, that's a huge statement. And I have no doubt it will be a major catalyst to drive private investment. We've seen how our, our cities thrive around the university and the private sector gets confidence, they invest and, and around, and around uni- university, university area. This, there is so much potential in relation to this because not only are we facilitating the expansion, the much-needed expansion of the university, improving, improving the outlook of, of a riverfront, it's also creating development opportunities for the private sector and instilling the confidence that, that for the private sector. We've seen, we've seen how by council investing in the Strand Road all those years ago has attracted private investment in that particular area surrounding the council offices. This is another example of that and hopefully in, in the not-too-distant future, we will be doing the exact same here in Foyle Street by investing in, in the new civic building here. But the, the vision is very clear to be seen and it's, I think the word transformational has been used in, in every element of, of the city, in every, in business cases came in front, in, in front of this chamber, the word transformational has been used. And this again will be transformational, but what isn't quite apparent just yet is the potential because as we've already outlined, that there's, there could be further potential developments spun off from this, including, you know, the PSNI station, all, all around there, but it, so the, the potential is almost limitless. But from what we can do within the confines of, of the City Deal envelope, this is a fantastic vision and have absolutely no issue endorsing, endorsing that. But I, I know it's, it's about too early for, for proposals or anything at this stage, but just, just in conclusion, just to congratulate everybody that's been involved in this, in this element of it. And I think it's, it's been, I, I know from speaking to officers, it's been a labour of love, but, and it's been long overdue. So I just, again in closing, just thank everybody for all the work that's been put under, under this for, for so long. And I know it's, this is the vision, it's the consultation and consultation will be a huge element of it, but I know in terms of the, the initial vision, it's, it, it's a fantastic piece of work, so thanks on behalf of us. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I have no more indicated speakers, so either online or in-house, so we'll just move on to the second part of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so we vary to Strand Road and Queen's Key. Again, similar to before, we're aware that it's very much traffic-dominated, blacktop and a road network. And again, we want to change that and improve the connectivity as well along this network to the river, the Strand, connecting the Strand Road to the Centre River Front. The, the option on the left here is showing, or the drawn on the left is showing the existing situation and the one on the right is showing either proposed. So it's, and changing the road network along Strand Road and Queen's Key, we can actually increase the width of the footpaths along Strand Road and introduce more greenery, more street trees, more street furniture, making it a much more attractive street. And it will have a significant impact on the businesses along this street as well. As we've already said, there'll still be two lanes of traffic going along Strand Road and coming back along Queen's Key. And with the way opening up a road there between, at the existing Strand Road Car Park, as you can see there, opposite the, the PSNI station. This very much opens significant development opportunities, it's just been touched on there between the North West Regional College and the Quayside Shopping Centre. It's really very much enabling infrastructure for this redevelopment. So there's significant sites there along this road corridor, including the existing Strand Road Car Park site and also potential for the redevelopment of the Tesco's and Quayside Shopping Centre where there's the opportunity to create a riverfront entrance to the shopping centre. So they'll have the entrance from Strand Road and the river from, and again, the buses will be coming along both Queen's Key and Strand Road. So this is a, a good opportunity for them and also the redevelopment of the PSNI site.
Thank you, Joanne. Just before we leave the Queen's Key Strand Road, just to highlight members, as it is highlighted in the paper, that while this deals with the, the road layout and the public realm layout, Queen's Key itself is an issue that we continue to talk to DFI about. The actual structure of Queen's Key running roughly from the council offices up to Harbour Square. As members know from previous papers, the Queen's Key structure is deteriorating in terms of its structural capacity. The reconstruction of Queen's Key is not included as part of the City Deal process, but certainly DFI are now monitoring that structure on a very regular basis. They're working with us and council very closely in that and they will be developing a, a strategy for the replacement of Queen's Key in the future. So the scheme has been designed to ensure that at some point in the future, when Queen's Key is being replaced, that it dovetails with the scheme. The ideal scenario, however, members would be, as the design progresses, that the design of this scheme and the design of the replacement for Queen's Key go hand in glove and that at some point they become a joined-up project or a joined-up sequence of projects. That's the ultimate objective. And as you're aware, members, we're continuing to talk to DFI on a regular basis with regard to that. DFI are in principle understand that this is the best-case scenario outcome, but clearly there are significant budgetary issues that will need to be overcome on due course. They don't present at the moment because they must work through the testing programme on the structure to come up with the remediation strategy. That's the ultimate objective, members, before we move on to the next area, which is now the Harbour Square area.
Area three, Harbour Square. Similar to the University Square with a significant area with a roundabout there, a dual carriageway section on the road and also a lot of parking and blacktop areas. So again, we want to improve this, especially in front of the key historic buildings at the Guildhall, Harbour Square and Custom House, making them a key feature as you cross the Peace Bridge and very much making the Guildhall and the connection to Shipke Street from the Peace Bridge more of a focal point. A number of visionary images from other cities highlighting the high-quality finishes that we were proposing here and the increase in green spaces. So in taking out the roundabout at the City Hotel, as you can see here, we're creating significant multipurpose space in front of Guildhall, Harbour House and Custom House. We've called it at the minute Guildhall Gardens because we see this as an area of increased green space and trees and somewhere for people to dwell and also an important area during events, council events and also for local businesses to use for, for local events as well. There's also a key connection through the public realm path network here from the Guildhall towards Victoria Market and on down Strand Road. In creating the, the landing point at the Peace Bridge, we are also able to create a peace square in front of the proposed civic offices that will be located on the existing peace garden. And we're also proposing to pedestrianise Whittaker Street. So there's a, it's opening up a completely different aspect here, which you'll see now in more detail as we move on to the 3D image. Similar to before, a cross-section just highlighting the, the increased in public realm area. And again, highlighting that climate change and nature-based solutions is key to all of our design proposals. The existing situation, highlighting very much traffic priority. Again, we want to change that, we want to increase the crossing points for pedestrians at the minute. It's quite difficult for pedestrians to move around this area and in changing, removing the roundabout and increasing the public, public realm area, we have a significant change here as you can see from the next slide. So it really has an impact here as we cross the Peace Bridge. There's very much a wide crossing point as traffic approaches this area. There's a change in psychology where the traffic will naturally slow down. There'll be a paved section across the road, the, the four lanes of traffic will be moved closer to Geller. There's a significant area in front of the Guildhall there that's been created for public use. And another key aspect of this is the, the link to Eberton Square. So it's a bookend really on each side of the Peace Bridge where we have a high-quality finish. So if you think about the finish that we have at the minute in Eberton, we can translate that now into the new public realm areas on this side of the river.
Okay.
And again, the lighting strategy very much feeds into this area. So a lighting feature is proposed in the new peace square at the proposed civic offices and a key lighting connection from this area down to Strand Road. And again, the potential for feature lighting, sculpture lighting, really pinpointing the, the wayfinding locations throughout the city. The wider lighting strategy, which we have proposed, is taken in all the areas which are allocated within the City Deal budget. So it's the connectivity through lighting from Harbour Square down Queen's Key and Strand Road to the new University Square and also the key connectivity from the Guildhall Square up Shipke Street to the Diamond and across Castle Street, which are all key public realm areas that we'll talk through as part of the Walled City proposals. There's also a proposal to review the current lighting of the walls, the gateways into the Walled City, the access points up until, up to the walls and also looking at key heritage buildings within the walls and murals across the city. The Walled City, area four. So the key projects within the Walled City are the repurposing of the tower and the existing storey of dairy space. So as we know, DNA Museum will be hopefully starting on site later this year. And when the museum is completed, the tower building will be vacated by the, the museum, there'll be no longer a museum there. So we need to repurpose that building and the existing storey of dairy exhibition space is quite a significant area there underneath the Craft Village. We don't want to leave that vacant. So these, the proposal for the tower and the Craft Village really takes into consideration the, the future proposals for this section of the city. We're proposing to open up the Craft Village via the existing tower building, open it up to the Guildhall Square, the riverfront via Magazine Gate and Union Hall Place. And I'll take you through the details of that now in a minute. Also just touching on the lighting and the animation of the Walled City and it's a key element of the proposals as well, the upgrade of the public realm areas within the Walled City primarily as part of City Deal, Shipke Street, the Diamond and Castle Street. We're also proposing to improve the wayfinding through new signage throughout the city, through the lighting proposals and interpretation throughout the Walled City. The introduction of new street trees on the primary routes and then all the proposals very much complement and align with the works that will be starting later this year, the Inner Walled City Public Realm Project, which is the, the streets behind the walls around the Walled City. We'll also be tying in with any proposals which are coming through from the North West Regeneration Fund, which is a key catalyst for the regeneration of the built heritage in the Walled City as well. Some images from other cities, just to give you a feel for the vision which we are trying to create. And looking at the, the existing scenario within the Walled City, again, it's very much traffic dominated, especially along Shipke Street, the Diamond, Bishop Street, Fergie Street and Butcher Street. The, the streets to the back of the wall shown in purple there on the left, they're more traffic-controlled streets, they have a different feel, a different surfacing as you enter these streets, so the traffic knows immediately to be aware of pedestrians. The other streets which are shown as, as part of the chrysiform don't have that same feel. So we want to introduce as part of the proposals more of a pedestrian feel to the city. We're not proposing to reduce the, the traffic coming into the Walled City as far as allowing the traffic to come in, but what we want to do is create more pedestrian areas so that the, the feel of the, the streets within the walls make people slow down, if you like, as they approach within those different streets in, in the Walled City. So in doing that, we are looking at connecting the Diamond down Shipke Street to the Guildhall. So the proposal at the Diamond is removing the, the car parking just in the centre section of the Diamond, not in the, the other quadrants. And in doing that, we can significantly increase the space there, make it much more attractive, introduce rain gardens, seating areas, places for people to come and dwell. There's an amazing view there if you look, if you stand at the Diamond and you look down Shipke Street, we want people to become aware of that and make it a destination place at the minute that you come to the Diamond and there's not very much there, it's much, very much a roundabout, it's very much traffic priority. So we want to improve that connection as well. The works on Shipke Street could potentially widen the footpaths there, introduce more street trees, more street furniture, places for people to rest as they're coming up the, the steep street. Another image there of the Diamond, potential proposals. We've seen photos, historic photos which are showing that in the past, the Diamond did have a garden area within it and it had, it had a much nicer feel and a real location and a meeting point for people. So we want to reintroduce that to the, the centre of the, the city. So again, looking at the Diamond itself, it's removing the, the car parking at the centre of the Diamond only and softening the, the features around the external sections of the Diamond with more furniture and, and street trees. We're also looking at the crossing points, Butcher Street, Shipke Street and Fergie Street, potentially paving those crossing points again, so as the traffic approaches the Diamond, they immediately have a different feel to it and the psychology is that the cars should really slow down here because we're entering a more, much more of a pedestrian zone. Likewise, at the crossing point from the Richmond Centre to Castle Street, we're proposing to pave that crossing as well. So again, when traffic's coming up and down Shipke Street, they immediately are aware that there's a significant key crossing point there where, as people cross from the Richmond Centre and Castle Street as well as within the proposal, resurfacing of Castle Street new lighting as well. A number of images again to show the, the potential vision for, for the Diamond. Again, I've already mentioned the lighting strategy very much feeds into the Diamond with new lighting up Shipke Street around the Diamond and across Castle Street. And now moving on to area four, which is the tower and Craft Village. So the, the, this section, or this project is very much the repurposing of the tower. So looking at the, the entrance to the tower, the external facet of the building and making it, you know, changing the, the feature, the visibility of the building, drawing people in from Guildhall Square and through Magazine Gate to the tower. drawing people in from Guildhall Square and through Magazine Gate to the Tower. It's creating a new connectivity from this area into the Craft Village. So the proposal is that people will be able to come through the ground floor of the Tower Building, connect through at that ground level into the underside of the Craft Village, which you'll understand further on the next slide. But if you look at the bottom picture there on this slide, it shows you that key connectivity in the pink arrow from the Guildhall Square through the ground floor of the Craft Village into the underside of the Craft Village, which is currently the storey of dairy exhibition space. And then coming up into the Craft Village Square. And in doing this, we can create additional shopping units on the beneath the underside of the Craft Village as well. This image here, which has been put together by Malarki Peterson Architects, just to say we're working in partnership very closely with Inner City Trust on this proposal. And Malarki Peterson Architects have put together a high-level concept to show the potential of the connectivity between the Tower Building and the Craft Village. So this helps to understand how the close proximity of these two areas and how we can connect through. So as you can see there, you come through the main entrance, it's the Tower Building, come out through into an open area under the buildings there of the Craft Village, and then up through into a centrepiece of the Craft Village through a stairwell with a new proposed canopy as well over that section. And these images hopefully make it clear to understand how we can potentially come up within the Craft Village and also the potential for new shopping units in the underside and then coming up into the existing Craft Village Square. So we've still got the area below for use for event space during the likes of the Jazz Festival. Another key aspect of this is we're creating a disability access as well to the Craft Village. Currently have to come up quite steep streets, Shipkey Street and Magazine Street to access the Craft Village. This solution and proposal will have a left provision within it so that people can come in up in the left and then they're up in the existing Craft Village area. And then they can actually go out on the Shipkey Street across the Richmond Centre that way. Again, lighting features will be key to the proposals for the new Tower Craft Village connection. So we're proposing new feature lighting, a destination point as we come into the new Tower Building and connection again through wayfinding, improving all of this as well as assisting improving the night time economy for the businesses that live in town. The wayfinding through lighting will give the town or the city a different feel, the Walled City at night time, as people orientate their way through it as well, making it a nicer ambience and also a safer feel to the city. I'm going to pass you over now to Edin, who will talk through DNA.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, members. Can everybody hear me okay? So, members, many of you will be aware from presentations and information brought to Business and Culture about the new museum proposal for Eberington. And you see it there on the screen, the images, which you should be well familiar with. This, as my colleagues have pointed out, is the first City Deal project to be, that will be, that will be actually built. We've made great progress in the last number of months and have received all of the letters of offer now that will enable us to progress quite soon with issuing the documents to appoint the team to actually, actually build the piece of work. And work has been moving on a pace with the designers tandem on the interpretation plan. And I'm going to give you a little bit more detail on that here. You'll see, you will be familiar with and you'll know, I mean, the developments on Eberington have been moving at a pace generally, even in the last few days. The building, there is new restaurants open. You'll see it there, represented there as the building nearest the Riverfront Stitch and Weave. So they will be our next-door neighbours in the museum going forward. And it was great to see that opening just literally in the last few days. So the museum, DNA is a museum, it's an iconic museum visitor attraction. It will be at Eberington. As I've mentioned, the funding package is finalized. Just close to 13 million with five million from the Inclusive Future Fund. It will be an immersive audiovisual experience across six galleries. It will include an archive discovery zone, which will be freely accessible for all. That will allow all of our archives to be freely available on a daily basis for visitors and our own citizens alike. There will be a state-of-the-art temporary exhibition space. And you will be aware that we have an intensive programme of temporary exhibitions that come to the Tower Museum. The new space at the new DNA will allow us to attract more, bigger and a larger number hopefully of temporary exhibitions, utilizing not only our own collections but also travelling exhibitions. It will have a multi-functional learning and event space, external interpretation. So the Starford Wall will be included in the interpretation. There will be interpretation outside the event, outside the space as well. And there will be a large cafe and retail area as well. The key themes, we've done quite a bit of work on developing these over the, over the past while, but you'll see them there on the slide. There is the foil as a gateway to the world through immigration and commerce, an industrial heartland and celebrating our unique shirt factory heritage powered by women. They're looking at the border landscape and its people, the key, the part, this cities and city and districts in the North West. Key to Victory in the Battle of the Atlantic will be featured. And featuring a resilient community steeped in art and culture, adventurers and pioneers in exploration archaeology. All of the above is in our DNA. So they're the themes that we're working on. This really is a regional museum telling the key stories of the wider city and district and celebrating the unique collections that we as a council have. We're one of the earliest councils to have our own museum service and our collections are rich and varied and really celebrate this, this part of the world. So this will take the best, the new museum will take the best really of the exhibition and the story of dairy, but also widening out through to the entire really North West region and celebrate, as I say, the fabulous collections that we have. The key dates, again, many of you be aware of this. We expect to appoint a contractor in November of this year and for works for the end of this calendar year. And we are looking at opening in late summer or autumn 2026. So we have a short video now taking you through the interpretation, which if we're happy enough to play. So we have no sound on this, but this is quite, we have been developing this with tandem, the interpretive designers and indeed our own museum team. So you will start to see an idea of each of the galleries as you walk through. Now, we will be scheduling over the coming months. This is, will form the basis of our engagement work that we will be doing. And indeed, members, you'll know that you're top of the list for those more in-depth sessions where we hope to bring you in and take you through these, to through the galleries and actually to look at the, at the, take you through the artefacts and the collections. So it's quite, it's quite difficult to give you a sense of, of what's happening there throughout the galleries. But my colleague Margaret Edwards, who is the lead on the DNAs, is also here as well. So Margaret and I and the wider team, as I say, will be doing sessions that will allow you to see what these are like. But the, the whole idea is that it is very immersive and you will meet many of the Business and Culture, certainly members will know from the detail that we've shared on this. The idea is that you will meet characters. This is, it's very much looking at the new development and the new modern way of looking at museums. So although it does greatly feature artefacts and our actual items, you will be brought through all of the galleries by the characters involved. So you hopefully get a sense there of what each of the galleries will feel like. Again, very immersive. This is looking at the, at the modern, this is again based on our, a lot of our workers' rights and civil justice collections. Then you'll, we'll also feature the, you'll see what it's like to experience life in a U-boat. So again, that's a very immersive gallery where you, you will walk in and experience this sort of sights and sounds and feel of what it would have been like in one of the U-boats. I think we're coming, probably coming to the end of that. But again, we have, we've developed a much, this is a much larger video and it will feature part of the engagement that we will be doing during this year's Foil Maritime Festival, which will enable the general public to, to see and learn part of what, of what, what it's going to be, what the, what the actual museum galleries are going to be. It's difficult on a flat screen like that, but again, this is, it's, it's a very exciting time. You'll see, we're going to be, we're moving in there to, sorry, to the archive discovery zone. Again, I've spoken about that already, but we are hoping that, as I say, we will have, the exhibits will be on display and this interpret, this video will be available during the Foil Maritime Festival. Again, we have sessions scheduled for local residents and for local community groups, for our members. We've been working with the Eberington tenants over the last few weeks to, to share with them the plans. So it is a really exciting time. I know that those of you who love our own, our existing collections and our museum will look forward to joining us on the journey with DNA. So again, happy to take any questions and look forward to seeing you all at our coming sessions to look at this in more detail.
Thank you, Edin. So I think Edin members did extremely well in narrating that fly-through there. So she said initially it wasn't with sound, but I think actually we'd be capturing that, Edin, and putting that to it if you're happy enough with that. Members, so we've taken you through each of the five zones perhaps. Perhaps one of my colleagues might want to turn up the lighting there just as we finish off in the last couple of slides. As we've said throughout, members, in developing this vision for the Centre Riverfront Strand Road and Wall City, it's been necessary to go beyond the subject area and look at the wider vision for the totality of the Centre Riverfront. Particularly with the traffic modelling, you can't traffic model in one particular area without having a look at how it impacts on the wider areas. So the wider strategic vision, as we've already touched upon, does and will include the complete reconstruction of Queen's Key as and when funding becomes available. The relocation of the council offices to the site beside the Guildhall is an important component of this. And we've taken another step forward, as you know, in terms of the visioning of that piece of work when council through its budget selling process this year has approved in principle the strategic funding scheme for both leisure centres in Templemore and in Strabant Town Centre and in terms of taking forward the new civic and commercial headquarters. So we'll be moving to outline scheme design stage with regard to that proposal in the coming months. And again, the conversation with Ulster University continues in terms of its potential expansion into those sites. With the School of Medicine site now entering into its last stages of finalisation of the legals and the transfer of that site from council to Ulster University. And beginnings of a conversation then with Ulster University in terms of its expansion into our existing headquarters building. We've talked about the release of private sector development opportunities, how important that is and how this scheme actually should be the catalyst to that. And then beyond that, the potential relocation of the bus station over to the VCB site and the connection of the bus station to the existing transport hub, the train station, via a further footbridge. So quite a significant additional amount of work that will be then signposted to, if you like, by the City Deal projects. The team is already working on what some of those projects might look like. And the team is already liaising with DFI, DFC and other government departments to see where there may be opportunity to advance some of the feasibility studies associated with those or some of the early design work associated with those. So if you like, we're already leapfrogging some of the City Deal projects to begin to think about that wider vision as we are in Strabant with regard to City Deal projects there and as we are with other strategic projects across the city and district. So I'll finish there, members, but just pass very briefly for the last couple of slides to Karen just to talk about that wider public transport vision in particular.
Thanks, John. Through you, Chair. Members, as we've touched on today, I suppose what we're trying to do in terms of the future regeneration of the city is to move towards more emphasis on enhanced public transport and indeed active travel, modal shift, the term that is used, getting people to consider public transport, walking and cycling above the use of the private car. And wanting to enable that to happen through some of the initiatives that we are actually putting in place along with our partners in the city. As we touched on earlier, this particular project is moving in tandem with the North West Transport Plan, which is being taken forward by DFI. And really that will be the blueprint for what DFI intends to do in terms of their future regeneration and infrastructure projects over the term of our local development plan and indeed working very closely with our planning team in-house in terms of the local development plan. And members will fully be across the detail of that from our, our planning committee. So in terms of the future of, of public transport, really what we want to ensure, ensure and enable through the City Daily initial proposals is the potential for a new bus priority corridors such as we have in Belfast with the Glider system. And really looking at how that could work across the city, both north to south, which would be, I suppose, via the Bonkrana Road towards Letter Kenny and then up towards Callmore. And again, in, in terms of east-west, looking at the Wall City out past Altona Galvin and down towards Drummer Hall where the existing parking ride is. And as John touched, based on there, the, the new bridge linking the train station with the city at the point of a new bus station, which would enable Pragavon Bridge to be freed up to some extent for all the traffic and again, reduce peak time flow on John Street, et cetera. As John touched on, we have been working with Translink and with DFI for quite, for a few years now in terms of how these projects can come to fruition. And they're both very committed to see them come to fruition. Again, linking back to our earlier conversations in and around our climate pledge and indeed the Climate Act that has now come into force in Northern Ireland and looking, I suppose, at central government and how they reprioritise their agendas moving forward to, you know, prioritise initiatives that will contribute to net zero and one of those being modal shift in particular. And you'll be aware that DFI now spend a proportion of their budget on walking and cycling, infrastructure. And certainly the North West Transport Plan has a real focus on modal shift. So again, that, that's, I suppose, where we are for now. We haven't obviously forgotten the longer-term issues in relation to the Strategic All-Ireland Rail Review and how that actually might be taken forward. So again, you know, those exciting conversations are, will begin to happen now over the months and years ahead, how we would actually dovetail into that, those proposals to improve rail connectivity, both intercity and also potentially commuter rail in, in the future and then around the city as well. So I think that's probably enough on, on public transport for now. Um, so I think that's probably enough on, on public transport for now. Now.
Thank you, members. But you can see, just as we were talking there, how when we were modelling this, you do have to begin to consider the macro transport planning, even to model small areas, uh, of, uh, road reconstruction within the city centre. Before you know it, um, you're all, you're into the All-Ireland Strategic Rail Review and the feasibility of the new route to Dublin. Um, so, but it is all very important, uh, to scope all of those at the same time. Members, we have more or less completed the presentation for today. We're, I'm going to pass back to Eamon just for the last slide, just to remind us of the key next steps, the four key next steps, um, from today. Um, and where we will be, um, moving to in the next number of weeks. So, Eamon?
Thank you, John, and through you, Mayor. Um, well, the next step obviously is the approval of, of the OBCs by central government as we said at the outset, um, we hope by the end of this month to have all the OBCs submitted. And really for the, for the approval of OBCs, technically what we are looking for is approval to spend. Um, and that's critical as we move into the next phase. Um, we are targeting, um, financial deal for the late spring, early summer. Um, and again, that really is a critical milestone, enabling us to move into the next phase of the City Deal Programme. Um, obviously we need to look at structures and governance and already we are, are taking and detailed consideration of accountability and of course resourcing for delivery. Um, as we've said, this is a massive, uh, programme of investment, um, uh, already approaching two hundred and eighty million and, and we hope um, substantially more, and it is going to have to be fully resourced if we are to maximise the benefits, um, and, and the delivery. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, the, as Karen has outlined, the early progression and development of the potential active travel and future phases of that, and Karen has taken you through that. So those are the four critical steps, um, to take us into the next phase of the City Deal Programme. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Um, so members, and through you, Mayor, that brings us to the end of today's presentation of the paper. Um, on the presentation, my thanks to the entire team. Members, obviously this is the completion in terms of presentation, not your comments, um, of the, uh, third full council meeting now with regard to City Deal. Um, hopefully members are getting some sense of scale of the enormity of the scale of the projects and the transformational impact, as some of which has already been reflected by your comments today. But Mayor, we leave it at that for now and pass back to yourself for any comments or questions there may be.
Thank you, John, and my thanks to Seamus, Joanne, Aiden and Karen and yourself, John, for those presentations, uh, and also for myself. Um, absolutely phenomenal amount of work has gone on thus, thus far. Um, and you know, it, it, it really does fill me with hope, uh, for, for the future. Um, I have to say, the only thing that I will be looking forward to is the submarine experience, which not, not for me, I'm afraid. But, uh, no, it, it really is, it does fill me, uh, with hope and I think we have, uh, plenty to be optimistic about and it, it all looks good. But I am also looking forward to, um, having those one-on-one sessions regarding, uh, I suppose what the, the DNA will actually look like. I, I had done a a Zoom meeting last night with the, the Fabregas and, and they actually, you know, were talking about how they wanted to capture everything and have it for everybody to see. And they didn't mention that, you know, there, there might be an opportunity within the new museum. So I, I'm glad to see that that has been incorporated, uh, within the, the, the sex, uh, care areas, which the museum will focus on. So all good folks and thank you all, uh, for your work. So I'm going to bring on Christopher and then John.
Welcome, Mayor, and again, just thank all officers and I suppose in outset, if it takes a proposal to, um, to, to move forward with the, the submission of the OBC, I'm delighted to do so. Um, but again, just to thank, tha- thank all the work, all officers for all the work that's went on there. Um, I think when, wait, I think this is the single biggest investment in this council area, um, that this council area has ever seen. So, um, it's, i- i- it was always going to be massive, but I think what the team has demonstrated is that by drawing and, and working with others and having that collaborative approach, um, we can achieve so much more. Um, so that's, and that, and right across the city, um, that's the city project. That's, that's something that's been ringing through is that, um, if we're going to move forward, if we're going to achieve the maximum potential, um, that this city and district has, then we need to be, work, have taken a collaborative approach. We need to be working together. And I, I, I think it's, it's testament, the, the, the effort and the work that, that's been put on by the team that, that the DNA project is, is the first in the entire north, um, to move forward as, and to be delivered as, as part of City Deal funding. That's, that's tremendous when you think that there's all our areas that have had a head start. Um, and we, and DNA has still, um, well, hopefully we'll get over the line first. But see, wh- when we're talking about this investment, I think it's, it's very easy to differ, not to recognize where we're at. No, there's, there, there's huge levels of unemployment. There's huge levels of economic activity. Um, there's ma- there's been decades and decades of underinvestment, um, in this part of the world. And we do need, um, we, we do need a, a, a real clear focus in terms of, of, of repairing the damage that's been caused by partition, um, re- addressing the major, um, and disparities in terms of, um, infrastructure with, with, in terms of, um, even funding. Um, so there's, there, there's a huge job of work to address that. Um, and I, I think, um, that, that being said, that's not the remit of this council. Um, but the remit of this council is to show ambition. They show a vision of how we would like to see, um, our city and district, um, develop and move forward. And this is one hell of a vision. Um, so I just want to, again, and completely endorse everything that's been presented today. Thank officers for all the work that's been done there. Thank officers for not only picking the time today, um, they, they brief us, but I know there's been numerous meetings, private meetings with, uh, at, at party level. And I know from our perspective, we really appreciated that. Um, so, um, if, if it takes a proposal, I am more than happy to propose a recommendation that we move forward and, uh, and submit the OBC in this, uh, for this city project. Thanks, Mayor.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I think it does need a proposal. So obviously, uh, Constable Jackson has proposed it. We in the SDLP are um, content to support that proposal. So I will second it on behalf of, uh, myself and my colleagues. Where do you start with something like this, Mayor? I mean, really, it is enormous. Uh, it is so ambitious, the vision here for the future, for our city, for our children, for them in particular, because this is going to take an awful long time. I think we have to be realistic, uh, with people here, Mayor, and I know you are, and I know everybody else will be. Uh, but the potential here is enormous. Uh, it is a vision for the future. It is something, uh, that we're entirely supportive of. It's something that we've wanted to see. Um, it's City Deal. This is what City Deals do. People always ask me, you know, what, what's this idea of a City Deal? What is City Deal? I think now when people get the opportunity to see this, then they'll understand what a City Deal can do for them and for their families and for their children and for future generations. Um, and I'm proud to say that the SDLP have been championing City Deal for a very, very, very long time. Um, when we began to do that with my colleague, uh, Mark Durkin, when he was the MP, a lot of people didn't get the idea. A lot of people thought, what is this? This, uh, you know, now people can see it. Now people can maybe start to touch it. And this is key, Mayor, and this is key to the whole thing. It's about moving forward from here and consulting with our citizens and asking them if they think this will work for them. And there is just so, so much in this, Mayor, pardon me, that I just don't know that I would have the words to work it through. We've just had an hour and a half of a presentation. There's just so much of it. So it's important that we get it out there. We get it out there for people to talk back to us. This is not us telling them. This is us saying to them, what do you think? And then we'll go from there and we'll take it from there. But obviously, as Constable Jackson has said, what we need to do now is get these business cases through. This is two hundred million pounds of investment. It's not missing that, Mayor, as you know yourself. We're already getting there with the DNA. Can I just thank Aiden and her team? And there's some of them sitting over here in the gallery for pushing forward with this one in particular, because again, it was one of those ones. It took a hell of a lot of time to get there, but we're there now. And that's important. And thank you so much to that team for doing that. But also thank you to every single person who has worked on this over the last number of years, and it's years in the making that we've got to this point. So look, we're enthusiastic about it. And we're talking about redevelopment of our riverfront. We're talking about redevelopment of Strand Road, Harbour Square, Wall City, Ebrington. These are enormous parts of our city. This is our city centre that we're, our vision now, Mayor, as you know, uh, is to, uh, uh, to, to regenerate it. Um, uh, and it, we could go on and on and on with the Aiden. I don't want to do that. Um, but I would want our people to see this, uh, and I think it's important that that was put out there today so as the people of our city can come back and say, well, we agree with that. I do have one question and, uh, put it on my phone and bear with me a second, um, uh, before I finish, but of course I will endorse, uh, uh, on behalf of the party, um, uh, uh, the vision that's been presented here in front of us. As I said, the SDLP started this. Let nobody forget it. Let nobody forget it. It was us who championed City Deal, my party, my colleagues. So thank you very much. Um, but one question, um, can the Queen's Key element of the road project go ahead without the Queen's Key work? Just a little bit confused about that, Chief Executive, and thank you very much and thank you absolutely to everybody. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you, members, for the questions so far. Mayor, do you want to answer that question? Nope, okay.
Sorry, Alderman, Jose.
Thank you, and my apologies for the arrival. Uh, there was, what we're seeing is the meat going on to the bone, uh, which is very welcome. And indeed, the whole presentation visionary, transform, transformative. Uh, doing what it says in the ten with regard to City Deal, uh, concentration on the urban areas of the city and Strabane, which is all very welcome and very necessary. Uh, but just a couple of clarification points from four point five and four point six. If these have already been clarified or whatever, as I am lit, so, uh, my apologies. Uh, four point five, the financial deal will require a significant step change in governance arrangements, staffing, resourcing, support within council. Is that additional or is that, uh, a reorientation of our own staff at present? Because it then begs me the question, well, if staff are going to be reorientated, does it have implications for the other provisions and services, statutory services, et cetera, that council has to provide? And four point six talks about, uh, focusing, uh, on analysing and projecting the nature scale, uh, et cetera. And again, that to me, if that focus is going to be there in four point six, does that have an implication on the other desires of our wider, uh, resident demographic reference? Many projects which are there in line, uh, beyond the urban areas a- and indeed within the urban areas. So, you know, that re- is it a refocusing or is it an additional focus? Thank you, Mayor.
Sandra?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everybody for the presentation today. And Christopher has already endorsed the presentation on behalf of ourselves. But I just wanted to briefly comment. I do think that the vision that has been laid out within this presentation is absolutely fantastic. It's so positive to see this coming forward for, for the city. The ambition that it holds for the entire, um, Riverfront, Town Centre, up as far as the Diamond and Ebrington. I just think the potential that this opens up is absolutely amazing. Um, but I would say, John, in terms of it, there is an awful lot contained within this, which is good and is positive in itself. But it's just in terms of, I mean, I have had, um, opportunity to see the presentation before. I've had opportunity to, to discuss it with you before, but every time I see it, I sort of pick out different elements of it. And I, I, I grasp different things that I might have missed in, in, in previous, um, discussions around it because there, uh, it's just amazing to see so, so much there. But it's just then around that piece, around our public consultation around it and how we go about that, because there is so much held within this. Um, I, I do want to know sort of just around the next steps, around that consultation. How are we going to consult, um, what the, the local business is? How are we going to consult with our stakeholders? Particularly, um, our, our citizens, the, the public who use this space all the time. How are we going to, um, engage with our taxi industry? All these people who have such an interest within our, our city centre, um, moving along the city centre, using the transport, um, along it. Um, I, 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 I think in terms of moving towards that pedestrian feel within the Wall City is absolutely fantastic. And I, I really look forward to seeing this delivered, but it's just that next piece of it and how we consult with people because this is people's lives. This is where people live. This is where people socialise. This is where they go out. This is where they work. This is where their businesses are. And we need to get people bought into this. But my fear is that there is so much information here. How do we break it down to ensure that people get to grips with it and are able to feel ownership of it and feed into it and, and, and feel that they are consulted properly on it. Um, but again, congratulations to everybody who has worked on it. I do think that this has such potential in terms of turning our city centre into a vibrant and thriving city centre, which is what we all want to see, um, for, for, for now and for future generations. So congratulations again. But just that piece around how, how we ensure we get meaningful consultation with people. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Alderman McMorris.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me in. Um, I suppose, just like everybody else is saying, this is, um, this is absolutely amazing to see, um, the amount of vision that's been put onto our city, especially around the riverfront and, and I'm really, really pleased to hear that there was over seven thousand jobs to be created out of this. Um, so it was really, really good. I suppose, um, Sanders just touched on it a wee bit, but, um, there's so much information on that. Do you know what I mean? Is there any chance we can get a copy of the presentation just to kind of visualise, um, a wee bit further? And al- also was going to re- uh, raise about the consultation as well, but, um, Sanders just touching that, but I'd really like we look at the, um, presentation a wee bit. Um, so if I could move forward on it, I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Constable Farrell.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mayor, and thanks to everybody that's been part of this, uh, process today. And we've already had separate engagement with the team, which we really, really appreciate it. Uh, so none of the stuff that's been presented to us today is new information. So we're across the detail. Um, unlike everybody else, this is so, so ambitious, uh, so exciting, uh, and really, really positive. And, you know, it's transformational in nature. And if it all comes together a- as intended, it's going to look and feel like a, a very, very different city centre. And, you know, we've got a fantastic asset in the River Foyle out there and we really should be capitalising on that. Um, I would say as most cities in the world would be, M base of, you know, a river that size, a slap bang in the middle of their, their city centre. Um, it's overwhelmingly positive, you know, University Square, the changes to Harbour Square, relocating the civic You know, University Square, the changes to Harbour Square, relocating the civic offices, a new square, the Peace Square. You know, it's just so, so positive. But I'm just going to ask a question. And I would agree with everybody's comments about public consultation. You know, the public needs to be on board with this. They need to be agreeing with what these proposals are. And I do anticipate potentially some negative feedback around parking provision. Because we're talking about taking away Queen's Key, the existing parking provision at Ford Arts Centre, Strand Road, Victoria Market. And I get the modal shift. I get, you know, the over reliance on cars, et cetera. But I know the rearranging the traffic flow is going to lead to some increased capacity in certain areas. But could you give us a flavour of the net impact on parking spaces? Because it seems that we're taking a lot away. And I don't know if those are going to be sort of made up in our areas of the city. So I anticipate, you know, public consultation, there will be concern around the loss of parking spaces. So would we have any understanding of what the net impact is or what the proposed net impact is? But this is positive. And as John had already said about DNA, this is going to be the first City Deal project across the entire North that moves into construction phase. So well done to Aiden and Margaret and the team. You know, this is a first and we should be proud of that. But any idea, and I'm not going to give my opinion on the traffic flows because I don't drive. So I don't think I'm expertly qualified to do that. But some sort of detail on the car parking impact would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to pass over to John now.
Thank you, Mayor. So I get the easy questions to answer, the members. So just picking up on some, so firstly, thank you so much for your comments to the whole team. Very much appreciated. And I have to say, behind the design team, we have Angela working flat out on the OBCs. And we're supported throughout by Brenda from SIB, who's also working across and cajoling and getting the government departments to work with us. So there has been a massive effort behind that. I think the first question from yourself, Councillor Boyle, Queen's Key. Can the proposed traffic realignment work in advance of Queen's Key being reconstructed? The answer to that is yes. The scheme has been designed to enable it to progress without Queen's Key's reconstruction taking place. However, it would be much preferable if they could both be done broadly together. Because you can obviously imagine, while the traffic flow can be sorted in Queen's Key, major enhancement to the public realm should really only happen when the structure has been rebuilt. Otherwise, it would be bigotry. So it would be very much the objective that we move to the reconstruction phase of Queen's Key broadly and parallel. The second question from Alderman Hossay in relation to resourcing, just a little piece firstly about, so what we're trying to do here is treat, do not treat City Deal. We are not treating City Deal in isolation of the totality of capital projects that the council is either currently delivering or seeks to deliver. So the three major strategic projects are City Deal in Derry City Centre, City Deal in Strabane Town Centre and the levelling up fund projects, primarily one of them being the Castle Darg Town Centre. So essentially, we have three major City Deal stroke levelling up projects across those three areas. And in between those areas, we have dozens of community based projects in the neighbourhoods of the city, the neighbourhoods of Strabane and in the smaller towns and settlements right across the council area. From a council resourcing perspective, we're looking at the totality of that resourcing, not exclusively the resourcing for City Deal. But what will the resourcing be that is required to take forward the totality of that ambition in the next four or five years? So that will be additional project management staff and it will also be a realignment of existing staff. So a combination of both. In terms of some of these projects, however, the resourcing isn't just council. It'll be Auster University as a major delivery partner, who will have to resource up to deliver the capital projects. The Western Health and Social Care Trust will have to resource up to deliver their projects. So will the Department for Infrastructure and so will the Department for Communities. So when we talk resourcing for City Deal, we're talking about scaling up the resourcing capacity of the totality of the project partners. But within council, it's not being looked at in isolation. And we will, as we move beyond the submission of OBCs, the focus of City Deal papers beyond that will be the resourcing challenge. And we will be bringing to you options in and around that and how they will be resourced together with all of those other major projects. So I hope that answers that question. With regard to the comments in relation to consultation raised by Councillors Duffy and Alderman McMorris, and indeed other councillors as well. Members, today is just the beginning of this process. What we're showing to you today are schematic images based on, there is at this moment in time, no money is flowing for City Deal. The images and the designs that have been produced to date are based on the available funding that we have at this stage. Once we move beyond financial deal, resource the projects, as I've just talked about, establish the new governance arrangements, there will be major resource project teams working on all of the projects. And embedded in the project teams will be consultation resources. In particular, this project will require a dedicated consultation resource, someone whose job it is to work with the design teams to devise a full-blown consultation strategy. Consultation on this project will start when the design starts and will not end until the project completes in sight. It'll be a continuous process of engaging with businesses, of engaging with the general public, of amending the designs, of tweaking the designs, of taking on board comments of, I think, one or two members actually said it, of ensuring that the project is owned by the people and businesses of the city. And indeed, the same is true of the Strabane project and the same is true of all of our major regeneration projects. That's not an easy task, but it is certainly the objective to ensure that nothing is being done on to people, but things are being done with people and it becomes jointly owned as a vision for the city. So once the contracts of funding have been signed post-financial deal and the resources are in place, an extensive consultation plan in consultation with yourselves and others will be developed. But it's not a one-off piece of work that'll take place over a couple of months. It is something that will have to be embedded in the lifespan of the design and delivery of the projects. We know that from past experience and people expect that as we go forward. The question in relation to car parking, the answer I can provide at this stage is all of this will be incremental. It won't happen overnight. As roads are realigned, as car parking spaces are reshaped and other public spaces, it will be on an incremental basis. A full-blown car parking strategy will have to, and implementation plan will have to be part of the project delivery. Again, a whole public consultation on that. But it's very important to say that existing off-street multi-storey car parking within the city has got significant unused capacity. And in relation to the sites that we're hoping to catalyse for development, there will be the potential within those sites for additional car parking spaces as some of the surface level sites begin to be converted to built facilities. So an incremental approach to the reduction in car parking on one hand and also the increase in car parking through the remodelling of it will take place. And in tandem, as has been stated, when we look back on the scheme, hopefully in 10 years, hopefully, a modal shift will have occurred. To a greater or lesser extent, there will be enhanced public transport provision in the city and district and a reduced need for car parking as we go forward. But that must be done on a consensual basis. It must be done through a consultation process. And that again, will be built on to the overall scheme as it progresses. So members, I hope I've answered those questions as best we can today. Much more discussion on all of this as we go through financial deal. And Mayor, if there's any remaining questions, please add us know.
As John said, look, this is work ongoing and we won't be getting things in more detail. But for now, I'm just going to close them in. Thank you.